Depending on what you do with this resolution determines what I submit tomorrow. I either submit what has already been approved, and I submit those resolutions with the appropriate attachments, or I also, I submit those plus the one that we presented today.
And if we made major changes in a month, would you wait until next November to re, you report those as they occur?
No.
No.
Yes, we, I understand the question. Yes, we would wait until December of next year to make additional updates to the plan. Because we only, we only report to the state on an annual basis unless it's the five-year increment.
And any consequences to reporting the resolution as it's currently adopted, not this one, but the one that's in effect, changing it in three months and reporting that in the next annual cycle, as far as the state's concerned?
No issue on their part.
And follow-up?
All 15,000 customers don't get a fine from the state.
Yeah, okay.
Is there further discussion? Well, then I'd ask for a roll call for the vote, please.
Nay.
Commissioner Hay?
Nay.
Commissioner Hodges?
Nay.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Mayor Ryan?
Aye.
The motion fails two to three. Is there another way to craft this?
Take out reference to automated recycling completely, just remove it from the report, which would be functionally no different from sending what you sent them in March, just that you're not mentioning it this year. I don't know if it's.
If we could remove, if we could remove it and give us 30 days to just, you know, to discuss any other options, but just completely take automated curbside recycling out of this resolution.
Well, and frankly, I mean, I just not feeling the need to reinvent the wheel. If we've got the, the resolution that we passed in March, can't we just leave that, leave it as it is, use that for our, the report that we're required to submit, and revisit this once Solid Waste Committee has had a chance to, to weigh in, given the new information. But I kind of feel like I'm being, like, rushed in, into something. I realize it was like, I know, okay, 2012, the first, is the first thing on the timeline. I added a couple of timelines. 2013, China adopted Operation Green Fence, which said they were not going to be taking our, you know, our recycling anymore, and upping the standards. Okay, 2017, in July of that year, they announced an outright ban on, on our recyclables, which began in January 2018. So all of a sudden now, it's December 3rd, and I feel like, you know, it's whatever, like, six years of, of, of stuff has just, like, come down to make a decision right at this moment, when I still feel like there's some, some issues that we haven't fully talked through. I realize it's been an incredibly long journey for, for staff, and for the community, and, and for the commission, but from my point of view, I would just prefer to leave what we have in place, and if we need to remove the curbside recycling, if we need to remove the yard waste, if it makes sense to swap one for the other, I think that's a, a conversation that I, I would like to feel like we had a little bit more at our leisure. I didn't know there was so much riding on that study session two weeks ago. I mean, I think, we have had so many study sessions on this, I mean, I bet there have been six study sessions on this, and now, all of a sudden, you know, I think that probably I would have been better prepared for that study session to ask some of the questions that I'm asking now, and, and I apologize for that, but I did not realize that this was a, a hard and fast stop date, December 4th, we're going to have, you know, we're making, you know, the, the final decision, because kind of in my mind, we'd already made that in March, we got the update on the markets, we did have some discussions about which way to go forward. I didn't know that this was going to be presented for action quite this soon, so.
So could I go ahead and make a motion, then, that we do not adopt Resolution 18-7639 until the Solid Waste Committee has had a chance to review it, and we also have staff check with a third party about what their role could be in a curbside recycling?
There's a motion.
Second.
Yeah.
It's helpful to either postpone a matter until a certain date, and if that is hard to predict, given the parameters that you've outlined, it would be helpful to possibly include authorization for staff to re-initiate the agenda item when those steps have occurred, or if there's another thought.
Well, my thought, I guess, would be that, well, it sounds like what you want to do is refer it back to Solid Waste Management Committee, and that happens in other advisory boards and their recommendations, and in essence, you wouldn't be approving this resolution, you'd be referring it back to the committee, and then staff could bring it back at the point the committee's considered it, and it's ready for your reconsideration. So I don't know that you'd have to be date certain, I don't know that you'd have to make a motion not to approve, you just, your recommendation is refer it back to the Solid Waste Committee, and then come back to you as the city commission once we have a recommendation from them. Does that make sense? I don't know that needs to be date certain, if you just want to.
Because I was just looking, it says.
Just refer it back to the Solid Waste Management Committee.
It says, "Do not adopt resolution and provide staff with further direction," so we can provide staff with further direction without.
You, you don't have to vote not to adopt, you can just provide direction to staff that you'd like this matter referred back to.
So I can rescind, I can rescind that motion and ask staff to send it to the Solid Waste Committee to take a look at it, and also advise staff, or ask staff to look into the third-party curbside recycling.
I believe so. At that point, you've given us two directions, we carry them out, and we report back to you when it's complete.
Second agree.
Second agrees. Are we, we're not obligated to buy any equipment or do anything based on the action we took in March?
That's what kind of brought us here in the first place, but given all this conversation, staff certainly is not going to proceed.
Right. We said that we're not obligated to do any contracts or anything.
As I mentioned, we initially brought this to you, just to confirm as a, as a group that you weren't expecting staff to be proceeding on that basis, and then it's kind of blossomed into this conversation.
Yeah, we, we had a study session on this, and I think, as Jim made a comment earlier, part of, I mean, what we're voting on is really one, is one of the recommendations made by the Solid Waste Committee already, so, anyway.
And, and, as serving as the interim, I'll do a little bit of homework on my own, but if you look at the code language, as I read it, and I defer to the city attorney to correct me, the Solid Waste Management Committee is tasked with the overall county-wide solid waste management plan, and providing guidance as it relates to the cities in Saline County, not necessarily the city of Salina. So I don't know that you're under a direct obligation to treat them as the advisory body for our sanitation operation, as the city of Salina. You certainly can, you know, take that, that feedback into consideration as you make your decisions, but I'm not sure there's a direct obligation there.
It, it doesn't accept Salina from that list of cities, though.
No, but, I mean.
I understand what you're saying, but yeah.
We're not, we have not taken the same role with any of the other municipalities in Saline County, in terms of recommending how they collect sanitation, requiring a resolution before we submit to the state of Kansas. It, to my prior point, we are the largest community, we are the largest provider, so we've kind of fallen into this dual, if not tri, role of landfill operator, sanitation operator, solid waste management committee, staff support, and just don't want to contribute to confusion. We, we stand alone as a sanitation service operator and an enterprise fund.
Do we meet again after they have their next meeting?
We, Christmas Eve is a, we won't meet, and the 31st is the fifth Monday, so.
They have a meeting in the next week or so. You have one on the, what, 14th, is that?
13th, so we would meet on the 17th?
We'll meet on the 17th, so we wouldn't be in a position to have a staff report ready for you for that subsequent meeting, because that's a Thursday in advance of the 17th. After the 17th, our next meeting won't be till the 7th of January.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
So I believe that passes 3-2, in that form. We'll move on to 7.3.
Item 7.3, adopt Resolution Number 18-7632, reaffirming the solid waste management plan for Salina-Saline County with addendums.
Mr. Tousch again.
I think Jim and I are tag teaming this one a little bit. Jim had a really good staff report, and he is gracious enough to allow me to supplement his background in his report with the, the highlighted state statute language, and, and my primary point there, kind of doubles back to what we've just been discussing, we just wanted to try to clarify that, what our role is and how we, how we find ourselves in this role. And so, by state statute, the, there is the statement that, you know, the state of Kansas broadly is trying to address safe and sanitary disposal of waste, and they are tasking counties or designated cities to develop plans in that regard. And so, the presumption starts out that each county within the state is going to have a solid waste management plan and committee, as spelled out in the statute, and then, by way of interlocal agreement, we have, have agreed with Saline County to, to staff and, and take on that solid waste management plan responsibility. And so, and there, I've highlighted some of the details there, in terms of the required content, required things that must be done, and the required content, but the primary point is, it starts as a statutory obligation, starts as a county obligation, and we're fulfilling the county's role, as we've agreed to by way of interlocal agreement. So I'm repeating myself a little bit, but the role you're sitting in is not as necessarily the city's line as it directly relates to our sanitation operation, it's that broader county solid waste management planning function. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jim.
So as we've, as we've already indicated, this request for action is to approve the solid waste, reaffirm the existing solid waste management plan with addendums. So although my blue sheet lists three addendums, if you would, based on, on what the discussion was from the first blue sheet, it would simply be addendums one and two. That would, that would be the, the change that I see it. I still actually have the original October submission, so it's, it's simply removing the, the statement, and then the addendum number three, as, as part of the submission to the plan. And then we will take out references to, you know, all the supporting documentation for addendum three, until such time as you've had an opportunity to make a decision regarding the overall sanitation system for Salina. So I, I think in that case, and I'll, I'll need some, you know, help on how that's framed, but I think it's still, if we can do this, adopt Resolution Number 18-7632, reaffirming the solid waste management plan with addendums one and two.
That sounds accurate to me.
Okay, or obviously provide staff with other direction.
Questions for Jim?
Nope.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Warm up a few minutes ago.
Well, we appreciate the thorough discussion of both matters.
Yeah, thank you.
There's a lot of input. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this item? We'll bring it back here for action.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve Resolution Number 18-7632, reaffirming the solid waste management plan for the Salinas-Saline County with addendums.
So.
One and two.
Addendums one and two.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes 5-0. 7-4, scheduling and calling a special meeting to conduct the city manager candidate interviews. Ms. Fisher.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I've been in touch with Art Davis, who informed me that he had arranged for your candidates to come on site and to interview. In accordance with, we're just off one week, as the, the tentative schedule that he'd provided earlier in this recruitment season, we had to slide it back one week just to be able to provide further review of the information, I'm going to estimate about three weeks ago. But in order to proceed with those interviews, given that we are, I guess, respecting concerns for some confidentiality of, of at least a couple of the candidates, the process will not be as, as public as maybe normally would be conducted, at least at this phase. So in order to do that, I worked with Mr. Bingson, and he has provided some language, and the very brief staff report and agenda is just proposed, in the event that you would like to use it to convene into executive session to conduct those interviews this coming Thursday.
Questions for Ms. Fisher? And we would be convening that meeting at 12:30.
Correct.
Is that the right time? Thank you very much. Anybody from the public like to address this item?
I guess I was making some, where will that meeting take place?
The meeting will be here, we will do the interviews in another room, and then, when we go to bring it back in this room again, and in the event you need an additional executive session, or some time allotted for deliberation and discussion, the tentative plan is then you could utilize that room.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move, this is going to be off the top of my head, that we schedule a special meeting to conduct city manager candidate interviews on December 6, 2018, at 12:30. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will set that for the December 6th. 7.5.
Item 7.5, authorized financial contribution to Salina Airport Authority for Economic Development Services.
Mr. Schrag, go for it.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, I'll kick this off, and then Mitch Robinson and Tim Ri, from Salina SEEDO, and, and Tim Rogers from the Airport Authority are here, and can provide additional detail. But as I indicated in my report, the Airport Authority and the SEEDO have identified a couple of possible opportunities to pursue as relates to economic development, prospects and employers in the community, and they both involve the Department of Defense and possible projects that they might be considering in the future, and trying to work with them in terms of understanding their desires, their intended location, and their process. So I've attached to the staff report a handful of items, there's a slide presentation that was prepared by Tim Rogers, and I think he can walk us through that, if that's something that he wants to cover, or you would like to discuss. There's a proposal from Baker Donaldson, which is a law firm that specializes in this type of representation, and is based out of Washington DC, and can provide us targeted services as it relates to trying to advocate on our behalf with the Department of Defense. There's a memo that speaks to this approach, there's correspondence from, from Mr. Robinson, from the, the EDO, confirming that they, as a body, have considered the request, and done two things, one, committed to $15,000 worth of funding, and then, secondly, provided you, as a governing body, a recommendation about expenditure of economic development funds that we retain for, use for economic development projects, subject to their recommendation. And then I also attached a copy of the resolution that dissolved the SEEDIC, the Salina Economic Development Incentives Council, and provided guidance as to retaining an economic development fund, and the role of the EDO to provide recommendations about expenditures of, of funds out of that economic development fund. So as indicated in, in the Airport Authority correspondence, and the SEEDO correspondence, both of those entities have committed $15,000 to partially fund the engagement of the law firm of Baker Donaldson. Additionally, Tim's, Ben, Tim and Mitch, I guess, have been in contact with the Department of Commerce, and, and they have committed $60,000 of state funds for the same purpose, and then the EDO is recommending, and you're being asked to consider a city contribution of $30,000. So that combined total is $120,000. Baker Donaldson's fee is $10,000 a month for this purpose, so that would cover a year's amount of time. I noted in the staff report that by resolution, the city is committed to appropriate not less than 3.9% of the 3/4% general purpose citywide retailer sales tax that's levied into the economic development fund, that commenced in 2017. And then also, the resolution goes on to point out that the EDO will recommend other proposed uses for economic development, special sales tax funds, to prepare Salina and Saline County for prospective business development. So in keeping with all of that, there is an economic development fund, it currently has a balance of approximately $833,000, and the EDO is making a recommendation that in addition to their contribution, the city contribute $30,000 to this initiative. As far as your strategic plan, it's consistent with our stated goals of being thriving economically and socially, and encouraging, and being supportive of industrial development, economic expansion, and market-driven tax-based growth. As far as the fiscal note, as, as noted, it's a total of $120,000 expenditure, 60,000 of that being contributed by the state of Kansas, 30,000 by the city, and 15,000 each by the Airport Authority and the EDO. I guess I would offer one observation, I'm sure Mitch and Tim will speak to it as well. We've had plenty of conversations about where our economic development opportunities lie, not to say that there aren't other opportunities in the community, but the one resource that we have as a community that probably sets us apart is the airport, and the opportunities both in terms of buildings and facilities out there, and, and specialization and expertise in terms of our, our workforce and, and our community, and I think Mitch and Tim are prepared to speak to that in greater detail. But what you have before you is a consideration of authorization of that, that contribution of $30,000. The way I framed it is, it's a contribution to the Airport Authority, Kim's, Tim's kind of the traffic cop in terms of facilitating the conversations with the Department of Commerce and the flow of funds, so it's probably most expedient for us to contribute to the Airport Authority. You may have seen a scope of services between the Airport Authority and Baker Donaldson that details what Baker Donaldson would be providing the way of services, and that kind of puts Tim in the, in the lead role on our behalf, in terms of that scope of services and, and administration of those funds. So the, the options for your consideration are to provide that funding, you could postpone consideration to a date specified, or you could take no action, which would result in denying the request and, and the funding initiative falling short. So staff recommends option number one, for the reasons I described. Mitch is here to address you, I believe Tim is as well, and then I have ready to put on the screen some of the slide presentations that the Airport Authority's made on the two particular projects. And I guess I would note, those are the identified projects, there's always the hope that other opportunities might be identified by Baker Donaldson, and they can advocate on our behalf on whatever other opportunities might be out there. So with that, I'll try to stand for questions and rely heavily on, on the EDO and the Airport Authority.
Mike, I guess I got one. Doesn't the county, don't they benefit from the EDO, and, I mean, I don't see anything on there where the county said they're going to kick in any, any money at all. I mean, they benefit just as much from economic development as, as the city does, I mean, I just.
I can't argue that point. In terms of the way we set up the, the EDO, we did kind of share some funding contributions there, but as far as the economic development fund that's set aside, our funds, they're just kind of independent, and I guess I'll let Mitch speak to their approach to the county and, and how they participate.
Well, I will tap dance around that issue. Thank you, Mike. But, you know, we've talked with, you know, as you all know, we're going into our budget, you know, our new budget year, so we've not made that request of, of the county on this project, and they are funding, you know, a small percentage of our overall budget. But Jim, you want to take a shot at this one?
Commissioner, I think, the answer is, the county does not have a fund for economic development dollars to go to for projects like this. Again, the sales tax dollars that are collected, indeed are collected from countywide, and they do flow into this fund for all county residents that use any services or pay any sales tax within Salina, the city limits are outside, you know, you know, county residents are paying into that as they use the services inside the city limits. So there is participation by the full county, those that participate and do retail purchases here, those from even from the outside, but the, the, the steps and process for taking opportunities like this, it is the, the city Salina Economic Development Sales Tax Fund that, that is the source for matching funds for this type of initiative. So the county just doesn't have the, have the fund to do that, and go to it in a, in a manner that we're prescribing and recommending.
And to add to Jim's point just a little bit, the county's sales tax that they collect does have a distribution to the taxing entities within the county, based on their property tax effort, and that's a whole mathematical formula, but a portion of the, the county's sales tax is redirected to the city of Salina. So we do receive some of their collections outside the community.
Just to refresh my memory, what is the county's level of participation? And we have an annual appropriation of what, currently $175,000 to, annually to the EDO, going up to $250,000, is that correct, in 2019, '20 and '21?
No, that's, that's, that's the current, current amount for these past, the first year, I think it was higher, but.
Right.
This past two years, it's been at 250.
Okay.
And that's what, the, the next three years is 250 for the, the city, county's at 20, Airport Authority is at 20, and then because of the first year, we were not, we didn't have staff onboard.
Right.
That money has been put in reserve, so we're going to be putting in another 30,000 out of those reserve funds.
Okay.
So we feel like that was a good fiscal, being conservatively fiscally. That's right. If I can go ahead and just get into this, and then I'll pitch it to Tim. Really, what we're asking you all to join us really in a partnership effort to take Salina forward. The military aspect of this, you know, the issue we've, we continue to see, and it's been brought up time and time again, is we need good quality jobs, we need good, better paying quality jobs. There's a lot of positions in Salina that's open right now. Industry average for Saline, Saline County is $15.45. That's a problem of trading a current workforce among each others, among the, the existing companies we have, and any new companies that might come in. We need to leapfrog the pay level higher, where we can attract better quality aviation-related workers, people that are graduates of K-State Polytechnic, which is another perfect reason why this project is, is, is right in our, our primary of work. People recruiting, coming out of Fort Riley is another area, veterans who are leaving the service, who have experience working with military aircraft, that's another aspect that we have as an advantage, and really, you get into the other things of the airport facilities, the buildings that are on the airport are prime candidates for locations of military, you know, obviously, that's a lot of those buildings, that's what they were built for the first, the first time, so we're just kind of coming full circle, really. The other thing that's a real selling point is the Smoky Hills Bombing Range, another key point that could be something very usable for partners that come in. So this contract, this is an extension, Baker Donaldson already represents the state of Kansas, this would be really an expansion of that contract, provides some additional work, some additional targeting for them to do on behalf of the state, as well as Salina. So that's something we feel very positive about. On November, November 15th, our Board of Directors recommended our $15,000 commitment, as well. On November 15th, our Board of Directors recommended our $15,000 commitment as well as our request to be here tonight and make that request of $30,000 out of the sales tax funds from the city. The Airport Board on November 21st, they committed their $15,000 at their Board of Directors meeting that day. So, I'm going to let Tim really get into the three areas of what we're wanting to support and why we're here tonight, and then he can answer, and I can get back up and answer any other questions that you all might have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mitch. Commissioners, two projects have already come to light and come as opportunities for our community to really kind of get ahead on and to bring in the expertise it takes to kind of bring these projects or advocate for our community, both on Capitol Hill and within the Pentagon. And that's the specialty for Baker Donaldson. They have the special staff, for example, leading the effort on the military side will be retired Air Force General Howie Chandler, a retired four-star general who is, has the ability to pick up the phone, walk into an office, and tell us about a program or an opportunity that may be there for our community. We also have key people that within Baker Donaldson have served on Capitol Hill on the House Appropriations Committee that can talk about the funding, go to those individuals that are looking at a program potentially going to be funded or future programs that are coming out that we want to get our community in front of the decision-makers early on. Two projects of prime interest, one's called MQ-9 Reaper Project. MQ-9 is an unmanned aerial system, unmanned system. It's produced by General Atomics. This is a project that came to this community really through the exponential conference in Denver, the largest unmanned exposition and conference, unmanned systems, air, ground, and water. The principles related to this project out of what the Air Force approached Mitch Robinson and Dr. Kurt Barnhart and asked, presented, we're looking for a location. So, we have submitted on this site and we have not, there have not been site visits yet, but we need the advocates within the Pentagon and within Washington DC to help us with this. Senator Moran and Governor Collier have both submitted letters of support, supporting this Salina effort for this project. So, we will be pursuing this with the assistance of Baker Donaldson. This is a maintenance and repair facility or operation for up to 12 lines of these aircraft. These aircraft stand, you know, as tall as a man and/or woman, and it's a large-size aircraft, you know, you really stand underneath the wing of this aircraft, so it's a large airframe. Sensors and engines and airframe ties in very nicely to the K-State UES program. It advances that program. It makes Kansas a leader in unmanned aerial systems modifications and reset centers and refit centers. It enables us to attract soldiers and airmen separating either from Fort Riley or McCallan Air Force Base to stay in our state and come to our community to work, community to work after they exit. We only retain about less than 10% of the some 400 soldiers and airmen that separate from the Army and the Air Force every month. We do, we don't have the jobs for them to stay in Kansas. This is the type of jobs. Projects like this also attract the private operators, private companies that support these types of airframes. General Atomics, number one, who manufactures the Reaper, for example, Hartzell Propeller, who provides propellers onboard. The sensor, the producers and engineers that work with the sensors that are onboard these aircraft. This is kind of the next wave. You get this type of project in your community, and the defense contractor, the private contractors come in, and they have representatives, they need a presence in our community, and they build a relationship with K-State Polytechnic. Another project we've identified is a future possibility for basing, it's called a light attack aircraft, that the Air Force will most probably be looking to purchase. We'd like to get out, you know, ahead of this project and advocate that Salina, Seline County, and state of Kansas is the preferred location for basing, you know, a wing or a squadron of light attack aircraft. In both these cases, we're also utilizing the advantages we have the Smoky Hill Weapons Range, the largest air national guard range in this country, one of the most active ranges in the country for inert munitions and weapons training and tactics training. So, it is a facility that we need to take advantage of and leverage, both the facilities at the airport, Airport Industrial Center, long runway, available hangars and facilities, training at K-State Polytechnic for all these programs, whether it's pilots, whether it's mechanics, technicians. These are the types of projects that we can, want to go after. We are leveraging also presence in our military, military in our community. We have over 200 employees of the Kansas National Guard, they're a part of our community, they're already here. The state of Kansas has a strong military presence, and so we will work on leveraging that presence and that advantages we have here. So, the Baker Donaldson engagement enables us to really lay out strategies and processes to pursue these lines of effort, and it will lead to other opportunities also. But we want to start out with two identified projects. One that is, looks like that the Air Force is looking for sites right now, one we believe is emerging from the United States Air Force for a requirement to base light attack aircraft. And probably the last comment, both these airframes, both these aircraft have both a military mission, yes, but they're also important to civil response to disaster within our country. A Reaper can be used overhead to track wildfires in our state, so can a manned light attack aircraft because of their sensing capability that ties into an emphasis that K-State Polytechnic has in emergency response with UAS and sensor systems to aid with disaster response and emergency management. That, I'll stand for any questions that you may have, and would certainly appreciate your support on this project.
Questions for Mr. Rogers?
Approximately number of jobs we're discussing with each one of these and salary ranges, I guess?
Well, each one of these projects can range from anywhere from the MQ-9, about 200 jobs, 220, not defined yet by the military. The basing, the light attack aircraft basing committee, we have for 200 to 300 jobs. The pay range, you know, for these technicians and these individuals are in the ranges of $25, $30, $35 an hour. These are not $12, $15 an hour jobs. These are highly skilled, either members of the military or defense contractors in specialized positions within these industries.
Does it be 200 jobs at once, or is that a...
It's probably a ramp-up. It's not at once. The light attack, both projects have timeframes that reach out to 2020, so it's not like they're going to be in the community immediately. But again, we do not really recruit those workers or those employees from even the existing employee workforce. Those have to come from the specialties that come out of Fort Riley and McCallan Air Force Base, for example. Take Fort Riley's, the transition for life, soldier for life, the transition assistance program. It's an Army program, so that is present at Fort Riley, it's present at Fort Sill, it's present at Fort Carson, it's present at Fort Hood. So, you have 200, 300, 400 soldiers a month, you know, and all with the aviation skills. So, you're recruiting them, you're recruiting the industry that, the aviation industry that is many times nomadic. And they will move to jobs based upon whether it's a General Atomics, or McDonald Douglas, or Boeing, other types of businesses that they recruit those folks in.
The MQ-9 sounds like the first one that's kind of up for, I'll call bid for lack of a better word. When do you expect them to make some type of decision?
We'd expect, well, don't know. We expected a site visit this past summer. So, here's, here's, we need the assistance from someone like Baker Donaldson who can go in and ask that question. When we ask that question, you know, I can't get to a person high enough in the Pentagon to get that answer. Be very, very, very honest, Commissioner. I can't do that. And, but we need that advocate who can go into the Pentagon and the staff and someone with Baker Donaldson, they're there every day with their folks working within, and these, and go to the program manager, somebody high enough that says, let us know what's going on and represent, anyway. So, I don't know that answer.
And I guess one more question would be, I'm guessing that you have been given a track record of Baker Donaldson and some examples of some successes they've had for other communities?
Well, the track record is very direct to both the state of Kansas, the Governor's Military Council, and directly Salina, the Salina Airport, Salina Airport Industrial Center. First, for the Salina Airport Authority in the past, Baker Donaldson has been, was instrumental in advocating with the FAA at the time, within the FAA, for the construction of the new control tower that we have today. At Baker Donaldson's, their representation helped break the code and get into the highest levels within the FAA to get that decision made for the benefit of our community. And Baker Donaldson is very involved in the, what's called an airport surveillance radar system that's ended up being located at Fort Riley, that provides the radar coverage for air traffic control, that provides the greater safety and separation efficiency of aircraft flying in and out of Salina Airport. Manhattan and Fort Riley covers all three airports. Baker Donaldson has been representing since about 10 years plus. The Governor's Military Council has been very involved in the successes of getting the KC-46A basing at McCallan Air Force Base in Wichita, and really minimizing cuts of forces at Fort Riley and to the benefit of City Manhattan, City Junction City, very involved in some, plus up some additional programs at Fort Leavenworth. So, they have proven themselves many times over through their support with the state of Kansas.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
Yeah, Commissioner Hoppe covered a couple of my questions here, but I'll start with my questions for Mr. Rogers. So, you have a track record with Baker Donaldson, and you feel good about your relationship with Baker Donaldson?
Yes, and again, this is also in consultation with interim Kansas Department of Commerce Secretary Robert North, and going to Secretary North and working with, and who, how do we best advance these projects? He's, and it was in retired General Perry Wiggins, who's the executive director of our Governor's Military Council, is, the suggestion was, let's go ahead and just add on and amend the current contract with Baker Donaldson that the state of Kansas has, and then add this to their current lines of effort on other projects within the state.
Now, does the fact that we have a new incoming governor and a new incoming Department of Commerce Secretary, is that going to have any impact on this once it's, if it goes forward?
It does not. Robert North is interim secretary, but he's also legal counsel, chief legal counsel for the Department of Commerce, and he will continue on in that role. And so, these are all actions that can be taken by the current interim secretary and will continue on. And the project has been communicated to the transition team and has been seen as a favorable step by the transition team. So, I had that exchange with a member, with a representative of the transportation, of the transition team at the end of last week.
Well, that's good, that's really good. Do we have, is there anything as a part of our agreement? I mean, Baker Donaldson is a big lobbying entity, and I couldn't find a lot of information online other than they generate between four and five million dollars every year in revenue from lobbying. And there, I saw a lot of states and municipalities that are on their client list. I mean, do we have any kind of assurance that, you know, we're not paying one division of Baker Donaldson to lobby on our behalf while, say, some community in Wisconsin or Arizona is not, also employed them for that same purpose?
They will not represent another community, another state on the same project.
Okay, good.
They have never done that with the state of Kansas, in my experience, with the Governor's Military Council. They would say, hey, we're already, they would have said already, we're representing Wisconsin.
Gotcha, gotcha.
On these two projects, I'm sorry, on these two projects.
Yeah, that we know of. If something else comes up, then we would de-conflict or go through that process. They would, they have an obligation as a firm to also notify us if there's a conflict, and we would have to kind of, will we waive that or something?
What are some of the past examples, and I don't know if it's for you, Mr. Rogers, or if it's for you, Mr. Scrag, of lobbying contracts that we've done? I mean, is this, is this something that we do periodically, or is this kind of an atypical economic development expense that we incur?
We have a little bit of a history of spending out of the Economic Development Fund for individual projects and recommendations, but to my knowledge, I don't recall any, you know, history of hiring lobbying firms, but...
It's, and I would, the term lobbying can be used in many ways. We're not lobbying for specific legislation. We're not a lobbyist in the strictest sense of going into Congress to lobby for a piece, for a legislation or legislative body. We are, will have the advocates that can access, you know, the levels of whether on congressional committee, on armed services, you know, and, you know, can that, can, to get information about the viability of a program, where's the program going, same thing in the Pentagon, tell us about, tell us about, you know, the criteria that can be released, where are the public documents that can be obtained to go ahead and prepare ourselves and position our community for success with this project? So, yes, they're, they're, they are representing us, but it is not in the sense of a lobbyist that's lobbying for legislation that has a different type of approach.
More of an advocate on our, on our community's behalf.
Right.
Right. And that makes me so sad, Tim. I'm sorry. It does, just the whole concept that we, and by we, I'm saying all taxpayers have to make a $120,000 investment just to get the ear of a public official at the Pentagon that obviously Senators Moran and Senator Roberts and their staffs can't even access. So, I mean, I'm not disputing like the necessity, I just wanted to get on my high horse a minute and say, that's the way it works.
This is what retired generals do, they consult. And if you want this like having an agent in the music show business.
Right, right.
You have no chance of getting this without this.
And we do combine efforts with the congressional staff and congressional delegation.
Right. Right, and right, and I understand, I was just, I mean, that's my naivete showing. If we couple this with like some of the other investments that we've made to the airport, we had, what, a $50,000 contribution to the RSA study, it was Renaissance Strategy, Renaissance something?
Well, we'll probably advance that to the, what is, comes out of that is the Global Aeronautics Initiative, that report.
Yeah.
This is advancing those recommendations that are coming that you will see early next year. And that is already out of this, out of the preliminaries of that study, you know, you're, we're seeing, we need a better, we need to develop better partnerships with General Atomics. We need to bring those types of jobs to the community to truly see the results. This is getting out there ahead and making the, being an advocate to bring those types of jobs into the community, for example, and working on that. So, it does tie into that, it will build off of that work that's already been done. We're just getting started now, since these opportunities are before us now. Didn't want to wait until a full study was done or when we think the timing is right. These are opportunities that are presenting themselves now. There's, I have been approached, and we have been approached by an agency that has involvement with the, for example, the light attack basing. And so, it's, someone has already seen, you know, Salina as a good candidate for that. So, it's not just by, we'd like to have that one, there's been an outside agency that says there's interest there too. So, that ties into the, to the programs for training at K-State Polytechnic, airframe, power plant, avionics, we can't support an avionics, electronics, and engineering technology program without the jobs here at the industrial center in our community.
Right, and I think this kind of goes back more, or more to just the city's involvement, is that, so we have made those investments in Beechcraft Road and the, you know, the study for K-State Polytechnic. At what point can we expect to see... At what point can we expect to see some kind of economic development policies that help maybe, help us verbalize, you know, you know, why we're making these specific decisions to fund these things and not others? I'm not disputing in any way that the airport authority, that the airport isn't one of our key strategic assets that we need to build off of, but just in a more general question, when, when would we have that kind of information? It's, we've been talking about it for a couple of years and if not longer, that's just as long as I've heard it. But at what point will we be able to say, all right, this aligns with this and this and this aspects of our economic development policies?
Well, and recognize, this isn't directly a response to your question, and I will get to that, but you may recall that the study session that is on your agenda planned for the 28th of January is the one that Tim was referring to where the study that we funded and, or we contributed to with Kansas State, they will be here reporting out the results of that. And so, Tim's exactly right. You're going to see, you know, kind of the conclusions of that, the K-State's strategic plan, as well as how we can dovetail into that in terms of economic development. And, and just knowing the conversations that have already occurred, the Global Aeronautics Initiative is going to be key in that. So, I think this is in keeping with where that, that study's headed, and you'll be seeing that report pretty soon.
I hope so.
With respect to just kind of the economic development policies, I know drafts are, have kind of been prepared, but they're not finalized. That, in all honesty, is not something that I've had time to focus on at the moment, but I think you have a policy document that we can review in terms of administration of that policy, which will speak to the incentive, how the incentive is used, and any type of eligibility criteria that we, we might want to impose. And we have some of those policies in place, and we can elaborate on other incentives and be more clear. With respect to that broader strategic plan of where do we want to apply our economic development resources, I think that's kind of a collective initiative of not just the city, but the EDO and the Airport Authority and K-State. And that's going to take some collaboration. The EDO's got a study ongoing as well. Chamber's working on business recruitment and retention. So, I don't, I don't know that I have a work product or a date for you when we will have an identified economic development approach on behalf of the city as much as an inventory of resources and how we might want to use them when an opportunity is presented to us.
I got you. So, because I have gotten some questions about, in terms of, and, and this is my last question, this is general, I don't want to belabor this point, but I did get a couple questions regarding how do we measure our return on investment for economic development? Because it is really hard to, to quantify it or justify it. And like I noticed that this particular proposal does have a set of deliverables as well as a six-month introductory phase that if at the end of six months, if, you know, if for some reason we're not pleased or we're not getting the outcomes we want, we can, at that point, walk away with no harm?
That's right, correct.
Okay.
Exactly right.
Because I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm nervous. I mean, they're supposed to be complete with this in May of 2020, and we haven't got, I mean, I'm assuming it's going to take them a few months to, to get started up, global atomic whatever aeronautics or whatever?
Well, yeah, I mean, you're talking about the project or you're talking...
Yeah, general atomics aeronautical, right. Right, that was the one, the MQ nine.
If we're talking about the MQ nine line.
Yeah, the MQ line specifically.
Yeah. You know, if, once selected and once they get the selection process going, it does happen very quickly. And Commissioner, one comment about expectations and deliverables and return. Really, the return is and will be seen on, you know, new jobs created, new positions, and, and the payroll there. But here's our dilemma as a community, as we look at projects. It really is, if I brought a, a project in for 200 jobs, looking for an incentive for, let's do cabinet manufacturing, okay, how many do we have already in the community? We have too many.
Yeah.
You know, general manufacturing, you know, ag, ag equipment, you know, things like that. Geez, if we brought those in, we cannot fill those positions. Where do we create, where do we, where's the workforce come from? So, we are trying to, as a, as a airport authority and the EDO and working with the Department of Commerce, and how do we find those opportunities that are so unique that we could probably, we can bring in 200, maybe 100 initially, and, and 125, and one thing, and build up to 200, and then sustain that through education and our resources there? These are the types of projects that do that. And I believe that is, you know, you know, just bringing in another 200 jobs that are like and similar to what we have already at the 15, even the $20 an hour wage rate, that just brings people from one, one employer over to another one or to the new employer. And I don't think we've really advanced, that's, that's how we're working, that's the environment we're working in. So, these are, this is a, this is something new for Salina. Yes, we have not done it in this manner before, but there are a lot of communities, a lot of states, they're spending 10 times this, you know, 20 times this to bring in these types of projects. It's because they are so unique and, and the pay range is so beneficial that as a state, we need to concentrate on it, and now as a community, we try to take our shot at one of these projects or whatever emerges as we go through this, these next six to 12 months. And we'll report back to you, you know, as frequently as you would like. I'll be reporting back to the Airport Authority Board on a monthly basis with this project. Be sharing that information with the interim city manager, and I'm sure that will just flow back to you. And Commissioner Davis would, if he would so, so wants to continue as liaison, will be getting that information too and part of those discussions at the Airport Authority Board meetings. So, we'll get the information back to you as far as the progress of, of the project.
And I, with respect to measurables, we've really got two things going on. On a project-by-project basis, as we consider whether it's a request for proposals from the state level or whether it's an individual prospect we're working, we have a cost-benefit analysis model that we use to, to look at, you know, all the incentives that, that are in play. And it factors in employment and wage rates and construction and impacts on property value and sales tax. And, but admittedly, that's on a project-by-project basis. As Tim mentioned, this is really trying to go out and find that project that we have a higher likelihood of success and, and it's going to be more beneficial to the community. And then, that's an investment just in terms of marketing and, and our general economic development efforts. Hopefully, it reaps benefits that the cost-benefit analysis is self-evident. You know, without going into great detail, there's a number of projects that we've worked over the years that we've identified kind of the top end of what we thought broke even on a cost-benefit basis and had to say that, that's the end of the line for us, and watched them go to other communities and receive quite a bit more.
If you want an analogy, look at the money cities spent to try to get Amazon's headquarters moved to their cities. They thought nothing about the money they spent because they knew if they landed it, it would be the biggest thing, certainly in their lifetime. And I was just going to ask if 30,000 was enough, but since you're only asking for 30,000, large bills are small.
Commissioner Davis, you're going to make my head explode now. But no, I just want, I do want to say, I, I much prefer seeing a target, something that's targeted toward our strengths. I, 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 I wish us all the best.
And it was, and just also the Airport Authority Board is at their direction, scout and see if we can find the partnership with the state. And before we just came in and I credit my, the Airport Authority Board of Directors to, and they were the, initiated, you know, the suggestion, why don't you go talk to Commerce and see what they think there? And they became a major, a major partner half, you know, so, thank you.
Thank you. Back here for discussion, or is there a motion for this item?
Public.
Oh, is there anyone from the public that'd like to address this?
Get a thumbs up.
Okay, thumbs up out there, and then we'll bring it back up here, please.
Mr. Mayor, move we authorize a contribution of $30,000 to the Salina Airport Authority for the purpose of securing the services of Baker Donaldson to assist the Salina Airport Authority in assessing and facilitating success in our opportunities, this is a very long one, associated with MQ nine MOD Center Project, general atomics, the Air Force, and the Kansas National Guard, and to provide assessments of efforts, strategy development, bid and proposal work, and other advocacy activities in support of efforts identified by the Salina Airport Authority.
Second. Then moved in second. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That will pass five oh. Development business, we have none. We'll move on to other business. I think you're right.
Mayor, could we take, could we take a five-minute break before we go into, or add that to the executive session or take it before the executive session?
Well, let's just add it to the time. Is there a motion for the executive session?
Mayor, I don't mean to pick nits at this hour, but it, it probably is best that we, if there is to be a break, that it be identified and then the executive session be such that it is an executive session.
So, you can, correct me if I'm wrong, you can make the motion and state the starting time of the executive session to be 7:10 and...
Right, right.
Have to take the break, come back then...
Oh, no.
Or second night, avoid going back and forth from the podium, yeah.
No, no, in that regard.
Mayor Ryan, I move the city commission recessing the executive session for 30 minutes beginning at 7:10 PM to discuss the road annexation and impact fee agreement with Saline County with legal counsel based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 45-7319B2. The open meeting will resume in this room at 7:40. Did I do that right?
Second.
Then moved in second. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll go into executive session.
Mayor Ryan, I move the City Commission recessing executive session for 20 minutes to discuss the road annexation and impact fee agreement with Celine County with legal counsel based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 4573-19B2. The open meeting will resume in this room at 8 o'clock.
Second.
And moving second, if all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll be back at 8 o'clock. You gotta have your motion ready.
Be adjourned.[1730.88][1730.88](laughter)
I said it better not be anybody opposed.[1732.88][1732.88](laughter)